Good morning. Good morning. I would like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners meeting at 10 o'clock a.m., meeting May 7, 2024. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, merciful Creator, your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Present.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey. District 4, I'm sorry, District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Here. Let it be known that we have a quorum present. Now is time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board and on their business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be as follows. First, we will take public comment from those that are present, and then we will take public comment from those who are on cue for WebEx link and currently, and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the Board, comments are directed not personally toward a commissioner or a team member, but rather to the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. After starting, stating your name for the clerk and address, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, you will have a single beep. After one minute, meaning you have one minute left, when your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you have to finish your comments. WebEx participants will be automatically, their time is cut off. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up, public comment?
Mr. Chair, I have two individuals signed up. I have Adam, I think it's Tully, and Lee Hanson. Adam Tully?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Adam Tully, 18390 Townsend House Road, Date City. I'm here today on behalf of residents of Middle Lake. Middle Lake is a 200-acre lake at the northern border of Pasco County. It's close to the Hernando border, and it's managed by Pasco County. We're really appreciative of the county's management of the lake and have very few complaints about that. Actually, we want to compliment you all. We, when I moved out to the lake a couple of years ago with my family, we bought a farm in most of the lake, just, just demographically, to give you perspective, is agricultural. Historically, it was orange groves, and now it's mostly cattle. The, the residents of the lake have gotten together and have worked to get to know each other. We help each other when a cow gets out, or when a trespasser is on someone's property and we don't recognize, and so we do a good job as a community. And, and together, we've started to notice a couple of issues as it relates to the public boat ramp that allows Pasco residents access to the lake. And we're very grateful that they get to come and enjoy the lake and fish. The boat ramp hours are posted dawn to dusk, but there's very little management of those hours, and there's nothing really stopping someone from coming there at midnight and, and running their airboat on the lake. And that's really, that's the basis of some of the challenges we're having out on the property and the residents of the lake are having. So just generally speaking, our lake is in Chairman Oakley's district, and what we wanted to do today was bring a public comment forward as the residents work with our local chairman, Mr. Oakley, to try to get a gate installed that would close at dusk and would open at dawn, and it can be managed by FWC or by Pasco County Park and Recs for opening and closing, so that the hours that are posted are actually regulated. We've noticed probably four major issues. Most annoyingly probably is, is a nice Saturday night at 2:00 a.m. being awakened by airboats, or people geeking frogs, or just fishing. It's, it's quite bothersome to the residents, and the residents on the lake, granted, it used to be all orange groves, but it's more recently becoming homes and people are living there, and, and so there's probably 15 residents. And we have overwhelming support from the residents in my email chains to bring this public comment, to see if we can do something about this. In addition to noise complaints in the, after dawn-to-dusk hours, there's stuff that's been occurring on construction sites. I don't mean to be crude, but like my, I had to explain to my kids while we were camping in January, because someone was having sex out on the boat ramp, and we heard it, and it was weird. I shouldn't really have to explain that to my kids at 10 years old. And then lastly, we've had kayaks and canoes stolen, and, and there's just, there's a lot of problems. Most recently, even a month ago, someone died down there in their car, and the police are still investigating whether it was a suicide or a homicide. I think that a gate, which is very cheap and can be opened and closed, would help regulate the hours. It would be a very simple solution, and I'm going to follow up with an email to you, Mr. Oakley, with the residents on it, so we can just work together to solve the problem. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I appreciate all of your time.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, I have Lee Hanson.
Do we have a timer, because I can't see?
It is, there's the papers on it.
The papers on it?
But it was working.
We can't see it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lee Hanson, 6803 Moss Drive, Newport Ritchie. I've been a resident of Pasco County for more than 30 years and can appreciate the seriousness you take concerning fiscal responsibility within this county and for the residents of Pasco. I unfortunately cannot say the same for Pasco County Mosquito Control District. Since the current director came on board a few years ago, the amount of waste and incompetence is absurd. A budget showcasing an $18 million deficit is unheard of, and thought the $37 million unnecessary campus is also absurd. I'm currently running in hopes that I can initiate a change, but would really appreciate if it was a program the county could take over to make sure that irresponsible spending and blatant neglect in duties is better handled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have that's signed up in person. I don't know if you would like to?
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak at this time? If so, come to the podium. CM9, are there anyone on WebEx?
I do. We have Ruth Clayton on WebEx. Hold on, Ms. Clayton, we are elevating you, and you are ready to talk. If you could remove yourself from mute and state your name and address for the record, and then you can proceed with your comments.
Good morning. My name is Ruth Clayton.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, I'm sorry, there is feedback. I don't know if there is perhaps two speakers on your end, but there's bad feedback. We cannot hear you.
Okay.
There's an echo.
Yes, yes, yes.
Everything you're saying is coming in as an echo.
You have, you have, there's two microphones picking up your voice, and that's what the echo is, if you could figure that out. Mr. Peppers, do we have anyone else from WebEx online? Was it just Ms. Clayton?
Just Ms. Clayton.
Okay. Ms. Clayton, would you like to try again?
I don't understand.
It's just an echo here. We're not able to hear what you're saying.
I've been in the sign edition for 2023. I have 12 of them signed, so I need to get them all in for, and this is the new, new thing. I have a lot of future clients that want more businesses, has to, what's, maybe not stop.
Good for you.
Our business revenue since this contract dropped, I have, since, since he started flying down, 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 one hard time and one time. I've turned down 15 jobs that are now illegally done. There's no one's exception, it's on the building, legally done. It's just that.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but everything you're saying is coming through as an echo, and we're saying what you're saying, so.
We can't understand you, I'm sorry.
We can't understand that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe she could send an email, and I can read it at Committee Reports?
Yeah. If you do, if you'll send us an email, then we'll take care of that, and we'll read it out loud for you at some time. Okay? All right, thank you. All right, thanks, Jack.
So I have, no one else is on WebEx?
Okay. So then we will close public comments, and then we will, this resolution. All right, we'll go forward with the resolutions. We have, so everyone knows, you know, the room is very full today. It's a reason, because everything in the country that anyone does, where fire department, police, cattleman, on and on, is being announced today and recognized throughout the country, because I've heard on the radio when I came in to work, and we have seven resolutions to be read here. So we'll move through them as quickly as we can, but actually give them all the benefit that, that they deserve and to be recognized here today. Madam Clerk, would you start with the first?
Yes, so the first resolution I have is regarding Hospital Week. If you're here for Hospital Week, if you could come to the podium, please.
Okay. Mr. Burgess, if you'll bring your Advent group forward, or if there's other groups other than Advent here, that's fine, too. Bring them forward, so come to the podium.
All right, I will go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-111. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring May 7 through 13, 2024 as Hospital Week in Pasco County. Whereas the Advent Health Connerton, Advent Health Date City, Advent Health Wesley Chapel, and Advent Health Zephyr Hills teams consist of more than 3,000 physicians, nurses, staff in Pasco County. And whereas Advent Health delivers unparalleled, consistent health care, including clinical expertise in cardiology, emergency care, surgical services, obstres, how do you say that? Obstetrics? Easy for you to say. Level 2 NICU, neurosurgery, stroke care, long-term acute care, rehabilitation, weight loss surgery, imaging laboratory, home health, wound care, diabetes, and women's services. And whereas Advent Health has been a steadfast pillar of health care excellence in Pasco County, providing compassionate care, innovative treatments, and unwavering support to individuals and families in the community. And whereas Advent Health Date City, Advent Health Wesley Chapel, and Advent Health Zephyr Hills have been recognized with an A hospital safety grade from the Leapfrog Group, a national nonprofit watchdog that sets standards for excellence in patient care. And whereas a core mission of Advent Health Organization is investing in the community and health care with $4.1 billion last year towards charity care, coverage shortfalls, community health services, and cash and kind, cash and in-kind contributions to other organizations. And whereas Hospital Week provides an annual opportunity for individuals and communities to express gratitude, appreciation, and support for health care professionals, recognizing their tireless efforts and profound impact on the lives of others. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby declares May 7 through 13, 2024 as Hospital Week in Pasco County, and ask all Pasco County citizens to join in honoring the health care heroes who are, who care for our community every day. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting the 7th day of May 2024.
How do, how do you want to play this today, Commissioner Mariano?
Full approval.
Second.
You got a motion, a second. I was a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. So who is the spokesman for the hospital? Mr. Mike?
Or?
Whoever's the chief.
Well, we don't, I guess I will be today. On behalf of my colleagues here in the thousands who are not here taking care of patients both in the hospital and in the community, we'd like to thank the Commissioner for this honor.
Would you mind stating your name for the record, please?
Eric Wangsmas. I serve as the President of Advent Health Wesley Chapel.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I can, I can tell you, I appreciate Advent Health. I spend time from here and there with it, and I've spent a lot of time on the foundation boards, different boards, and helped with different hospitals over the years, but they won't let me off the foundation board, so. Not that I want to get off, but it's been very good in my life, but Advent Health or the hospital system that Advent Health is in now, which changed names, but, I mean, way back in the 80s, you were in that Zephyr Hills Hospital that my family gave a lot of money for that hospital to, to do, and there's been a lot of people getting good care there. And only fact that you're one hospital, and we have other hospitals that, all the hospitals worry about the next hospital that comes in, because they're going to take their patients, but I, I look at it a different way, because the fact of being several hospitals in our county and community is a fact that the benefactor of that is our citizens of Pasco County, because no matter where you go, you get the best care you can get here in Pasco County. So I appreciate everything y'all doing for those terms. Jack, you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wore this tie when Wiregrass got opened up, so it was kind of symbolic, you're a neighbor from Wesley Chapel, especially right there. Seeing Advent Health come in from that point in time, what you guys have done to the community has been phenomenal, not just the care, and I've been a pleasant recipient of it as well, as well as family members, but what you've done to the community has been phenomenal, from backing Advent Health, our buildings, our firefighters, Family Day. I showed pictures last time we're here of the Family Days presentation that you guys helped sponsor, to let all our firefighters go out there and enjoy themselves, and it's a great group here, but they greatly appreciate it, we greatly appreciate it. So not only for your care, but your presence and your generosity, generosity to our, our people is fantastic, so thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. He had to echo Chair Oakley and Commissioner Mariano. Not just the economic impact you provide to Pasco County, with jobs and great health care for everybody who lives here traveling through, but there's often not an event that you all won't step up to the plate and help. So your reinvestment into the market that you guys service is just tremendously appreciated at all levels, and more importantly, you know, your foundation of, of caring through people, through Christ, and your faith-based approach to health care and serving our community is just admirable. So honored to recognize you all today, and keep hanging tough out there.
If the other Commissioners all would step back here, and I'll go down.
Got you all. Okay, is that right here?
Well, I think that there's a couple people here for this. International Firefighters Day? Would you mind stepping up?
I see a couple out there.
Just a few.
Come on. All of you can slip up behind if you'd like to.
Yes.
It's up to y'all.
That's right.
Bring them up.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-109. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring May 4, 2024 as International Firefighters Day in Pasco County. Whereas in recognition of our firefighters, International Firefighters Day honors the sacrifices made by past and present firefighters to ensure their community is as safe as possible. And whereas International Firefighter Day begins, began in 1999, when Lieutenant J.J. Edmondson set out to honor five firefighters from the Geelong West Fire Brigade of Australia who lost their lives while fighting a fire on December 2, 1998, and is observed on May 4, because that is the feast day for Saint Florian, who is considered the patron saint of firefighters. And whereas the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation recognizes the week of May 4 through the 5, 2024, as the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend, and created Light the Night for Fallen Firefighters, which encourages fire departments, families, and businesses to turn their porch lights red to and businesses to turn their porch lights red to honor and remember those firefighters who have lost their lives in the line of duty. And whereas, International Firefighters Day aims to raise public awareness about the invaluable role that firefighters play in protecting lives and property, and to serve as a solemn reminder of the dangers increased health risk, the sacrifices they make, and the toll their profession takes on their physical and mental well-being. And whereas, International Firefighters Day is a worldwide day to recognize, express appreciation, and salute the men and women of the fire service for their incredible dedication to public service, their bravery in keeping us safe, and protecting our properties, communities, natural preserves, and wildernesses. And whereas, we reflect on their heroism, show our gratitude, and thank them for their extraordinary commitment, exceptional courage, selfless duty, and offer our support to those firefighters on the front lines every day. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board recognizes and proclaims May 4th, 2024 as International Firefighter Day in Pasco County, and encourages the citizens of Pasco County to join in expressing appreciation for the hard work, extreme diligence, exceptional service, and dedication provided by the individuals who work in Pasco County Fire Rescue. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting the 7th day of May 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Welcome, gentlemen and ladies. So we appreciate everybody being here, and Chief, I guess you're going to speak to us here.
Yes, myself and John Michael from Local 442, showing a unified front. First and foremost, thank you for taking the time to honor the men and women of Pasco County Fire Rescue, and all firefighters throughout our state, our country, globally. Every day we come to work, and we put on that uniform to serve our community here in Pasco County, our residents, and we provide that level of service that's second to none. I, myself, along with the leadership staff, are so proud of the men and women because they do it. We would not be here without them. And to all the support staff that are behind the scenes, doing the work that is, it doesn't go unnoticed, and we just want to thank you all, really truly, to just acknowledge that to the men and women. And two fun facts here real quick. First, I want to say thank you to Eric and Advent Health and his team, because they stepped up, like Commissioner Mariano said, showed support for our Pasco County Fire Rescue Family Fest, and they were huge, they were our main sponsor there to help give back and say thank you to the men and women of Pasco County Fire Rescue, and I want to thank them. And my last fun fact here is, just to show you how far Pasco County has come, we have a chief from Sacramento Fire Rescue that's in town with us today, looking at our cancer initiatives, looking at our decontamination process in our decon depot. That was unheard of five, six, seven years ago. So we are being the industry leaders and stepping out to the forefront collectively with the union and as well as the rank and file, and really spearheading this tremendous initiative. So I just wanted to throw that fun fact out there. But thank you very much again, and thank you to the men and women of Pasco County Fire Rescue.
Mr. Whitman?
Thank you, Chair. Or John Michael, I guess you're, your name.
Good morning. On Saturday, May 4th, the Members of the Fire Service Family Worldwide celebrated the 25th anniversary of International Firefighters Day. This day serves as an opportunity to reflect on the selfless devotion of firefighters to their communities and the lifesaving work they perform every day. As were many of you, I was moved by the stories and personal testimonies offered by friends and colleagues of Commissioner Bradford last week. He embodied the ideals of service to others and a life dedicated to supporting first responders. So in his honor, I would like to recognize those that have committed to a life of service supporting our Pasco County professional firefighters. To all of the 40-hour support personnel, both sworn and civilian, that work tirelessly behind the scenes, day in and day out, we appreciate all that you do for us. The divisions of EMS, logistics, personnel, technical services, resource management, operations, health and safety, training, special operations, community risk reduction, and the ambulance billing team are all vitally important and an integral part of our mission's success. We cannot fulfill our obligation to serve the residents of Pasco County without you. To our community partners and external stakeholders, Chief Perez, Chief Gwen, and the entire senior staff, the Pasco County Public Safety Branch, and most importantly, to the county administrator and the Board of County Commissioners, we are grateful to have your support. This board continues to lead the way, and by your example, have created a culture that promotes a passion for innovation and service excellence. We are proud to call Pasco County Fire Rescue our home. So again, as we celebrate the commitment, dedication, loyalty, and heroism of our professional firefighters on this special day each year, let us not forget those that support them, including their families that sacrifice so much throughout the year. On behalf of the more than 700 professional firefighters that I am elected to represent, thank you to all of those that continue to support us each and every day.
Thank you. Mr. Whitman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Chief, I really appreciate your fun fact. Anytime somebody comes to Florida from California to learn something, let's welcome them and teach them something great to take back west. So welcome to that chief, if he's here in town. No, look, it's no secret, y'all have a tough job. You gotta be resilient, your families have to be resilient, you know, it's a true family affair. And so thank you all for choosing the profession that you do, and greatly appreciate your families who go along the rides with you and worry and stress, you know, while you're serving the many residents and businesses and visitors of Pasco County. So just thank you, and very happy that all of you are here today, and as you know, doors open, call if you need anything.
Mr. Mariano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, years ago, when Commissioner Whitman was a wee little one, in the 80s, we had put an identity that we want to be premier in this county. And I got to say, what your performance does for our citizens, you guys lead in the way in premier, so thank you for that. You know, you go out there, you fight fires, you do emergency services, you're on the line helping people at that moment. And it's critical moments, it's critical times, and you guys are on the line every single time, and greatly appreciate it. We're so glad that the whole work and the partnership with the union and the administration to get everybody duly trained so that everybody's on the same page, and everybody can get the work done that needs to get done to save people, it's phenomenal. What you do for safety is incredible, and I got to say, I just love the brotherhood that you guys have with each other. It's phenomenal. It was so nice to see Family Day, we can all get together, hang out a little bit looser. Some of you guys are a little bit crazy, but great to see you guys have that camaraderie coming up, so really appreciate all that you do for the citizens of Pasco.
Mike, you want to add something?
I'd just like to thank, you know, the collaboration and the cooperation between administration, the union, and the troops in general. This has just been fantastic. I have never seen just a greater, just a greater brotherhood, a greater working together towards and achieving common goals here with this agency and where it stands today. You guys have just, you continue to raise the bar, you continue to do just great, great work, and I'm just proud to be able to, you know, participate in even some limited way to the success that you bring. And I know it's important to our citizens and what you do, because you help people, quite honestly, on the worst day of their life, probably, and it's truly a calling, and I just thank you for that.
Chief JT, I mean, all of you, I support you each and every day. I get up and walk through this county, and been in my entire life, and firefighters are always, I hate to say they've been the same, but they think alike, no matter whether they're a volunteer, or if they're in another county, they all have the same mindset of doing the right thing for the citizens of their county. And we are very appreciative of all that you do, and all the hard work you go through, and just bringing your families and all together, and the brotherhood that y'all show is greater than any I've ever seen. And it's very strong, and it really stands out in our county. So I certainly appreciate everything you do, and I will always completely support your group and keep trying to make the things better for you and where you can make it better for us. So thank you. If y'all will come up, I'll come down front, and we'll get a picture, and you guys stand up there behind us.
I was this close to wearing a pink tie. I was this close. Oh. Good chance.
Just two. All right, the third?
Okay. If you're here for National Alcohol and Other Drug Related Birth Defects Awareness Week, could you please, thank you?
Right now, group.
Thank you. I will go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-108. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2024, as National Alcohol and Other Drug Related Birth Defects Awareness Week in Pasco County. Whereas the health and well-being of all Pasco County citizens are of paramount importance to the prosperity and vitality of our communities. And whereas, drug and other, alcohol and other drug used during pregnancy can lead to birth defects, developmental disorders, and other adverse outcomes impacting countless lives and communities. And whereas, about one in every 100 children born nationwide are adversely affected by prenatal alcohol or drug exposure. And whereas, National Alcohol and Other Drug Related Birth Defects Awareness Week is an annual observance aimed at raising public awareness about the risks associated with substance used during pregnancy and promoting healthy pregnancies and babies. And whereas, Pasco County Alliance for Substance Addiction Prevention, ASAP, Substance Exposed Newborn Committee aims to raise awareness and provide resources on alcohol and other drug-related birth defects, as Florida reported 934 cases of Neonatal Abstinence Syndrome, NAS, in 2021. And whereas, the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the importance of education, support, and resources in preventing alcohol and other drug-related birth defects, and aims our commitment to the health of mothers, infants, and families within our community. And whereas, it is critical for healthcare providers, families, educators, and community organizations to collaborate in disseminating information and resources to prevent substance abuse during pregnancy, supporting affected families, and advocating for policies that promote maternal and health and child health. And whereas, through collective efforts, we can decrease the prevalence of alcohol and other drug-related birth defects and ensure a brighter and healthier future for all children. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2024, as National Alcohol and Other Drug Related Birth Defects Awareness Week in Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting the 7th day of May 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Welcome.
Thank you. Respectfully request permission to receive files for the commissioners?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. First and foremost, I would like to spend our heartfelt gratitude to the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners for recognizing the critical importance of National Alcohol and Other Drug Related Birth Defects Week. This proclamation not only highlights the ongoing issues related to substance use during pregnancy, but also reinforces Pasco County Alliance for Substance Addiction Prevention commitment to educating and empowering our community. This week serves as a crucial reminder of the lifelong impacts that substance misuse can have on the most vulnerable among us, our children. It's sobering to realize that nationally, approximately one in every 100 babies is born with a substance-related birth defect, underscoring the urgency and importance of about the dangers of alcohol and drug use during pregnancy, and to support those that are struggling with addiction. Pasco County Substance Exposed Newborn Committee, along with Healthy Start Coalition of Pasco County, is steadfast in our commitment to reducing the numbers through comprehensive education, prevention strategies, and community support initiatives. With your support, we are making strides towards a healthier pregnancy and futures for our children. This recognition by the board invigorates our resolve and broadens our reach to affect positive change. In closing, we thank you once again for this honor and for your support. Together, we will continue to make a positive impact and uphold the well-being of our community, ensuring a brighter future for all. And again, we just thank you all.
Thank you. Could you, I don't think you stated your name and organization for the record.
So Pasco Alliance for Healthy Communities, and Pasco ASAP, along with, in partnership with Pasco County Healthy Start, or Pasco Healthy Start Coalition. I always give the two words mixed up.
Thank you, and your name?
My name is Missy Coyle, 8373 Matthew Tribe, Coordinator for Alliance for Healthy Communities.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Whitman?
Thank you, Chair.
Missy, thank you all for coming today. You really do yeoman's work with folks who are troubled, and then all of a sudden they find out they're pregnant, and how they manage that situation, and, you know, they're very vulnerable folks out there. So thank you for your work and dedication to that segment of our population, to help them through to become a better person, hopefully a successful parent, and that they can teach their kids, hey, you can have some challenges in life, but we can get over it and have a really good life here in Pasco, or whatever they may do throughout their course here on earth. So pleasure to have you today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mariano?
I'd like to thank you all for the great work you do. It's a big issue. The drugs nowadays are just so lethal, if they even make it alive, to go through what they're doing. So we greatly appreciate all your work you're doing. I think you know this council, this commission strongly put the opioid money where we thought it in place, so there's more coming too. So we'll keep the resources going by keeping up the great work that this was designed to go do. So thank you all.
And thank you for all that you do for citizens of Pasco County. I mean, any little thing you can do to help anybody is greatly appreciated by them and by us here, because we do all we can to try to make life better for people that are in our counties. So thank you for what you do. Okay? All right? Y'all want to go down in front and make a picture?
I would just like to, the files you received, we are having a town hall on the 15th of May, and just, I'd like to personally invite you guys to come and hear what the community has to say regarding substance misuse in our community, and how we can make those changes.
You have a conference coming up as well? Ma'am, you have a conference coming up as well?
Yes, we do have, thank you so much. I didn't want to take too much time, so I had to pick and choose. Yes, we do have a conference coming up, and we have a keynote speaker, Lamar Odom, who will be, if you are familiar with Lamar Odom. So he will be our keynote speaker, and it's going to be a great day of learning, breakout sessions, and we really just, you know, would love to have you guys there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, everybody, camera first, please, right here.
Okay, the next resolution, if you are here for the Correctional Officers and Employee Week, please come to the podium. Thank you.
JJ's getting a workout today.
I know.
The chief is on vacation, so Captain Rawson's going to speak a little bit.
The chief is on vacation, so Captain Rawson's going to speak a little bit, and he's got a lot of support with him.
Great. Well, I'll go ahead and read the resolution first. So, Resolution number 24-110, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024, as Pasco County Correctional Officers and Employees Week. Whereas on October 1st, 2022, Pasco County assumed all duties and responsibilities of the management and operation of the Pasco County Jail in Land O' Lakes, Florida. ANRAZ, the Pasco County Jail is documented as the 10th largest county correctional facility in Florida due to housing over 1,000 offenders. ANRAZ Correctional Facilities across the United States, both public and private, military and civilian, are run by highly qualified and experienced men and women with a deep understanding of the challenges and difficulties within their profession. ANRAZ Correctional Officers are highly trained professionals dedicated to maintaining secure correctional facilities and ensuring public safety for our communities. ANRAZ Correctional Officers and professionals serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, supervisors, officers, and support staff, and they work in very, in a very demanding and stressful conditions, face many challenges, and put their lives at risk every day. ANRAZ Correctional Officers and Employees are responsible for the custody care, safety, security, and reform of thousands of offenders every year, as well as the maintenance of safety and secure facilities. ANRAZ Correctional Officers and Employees guide, counsel, mentor, teach, train, treat, and assist in rehabilitation of offenders, and provide offenders with direction, guidance, and a new focus while preparing them for community reentry. ANRAZ Correctional Officers and Employees rise to meet many challenging, sorry, let me try that again. ANRAZ Correctional Officers and Employees rise to meet any challenge faced with courage, honor, and excellence. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby proclaims the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024, as Pasco County Correctional Officers and Employee Week, and encourages the citizens of Pasco County to join in expressing appreciation for the hard work, extreme diligence, exceptional service, and unsurmountable dedication provided by the individuals who work in our county correctional facilities. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting the 7th day of May 2024.
Approval.
Second.
Got a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Who's our spokesperson here?
Good morning.
Yes, good morning.
First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Waitman for bringing forth this resolution, as well as Chairman Oakley and the rest of the county commissioners, for recognizing the dedication, the tireless work, and professionalism displayed by the correctional officers under their watch. Nationwide, there are over 1,200,000 individuals incarcerated across the United States. Corrections is not a publicly visible job, and not many people truly understand the work and dedication displayed by these officers. It is a difficult and often dangerous job, so I just wanted to extend our appreciation and gratitude for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Captain, you know, since the county's taken over the jail, it's been quite a learning experience for a whole lot of people, right? And can't appreciate you all enough, the corrections team, and staying around to service the folks in the jail, to service the county. You know, we're working to get you staffed up. I'm assuming that probably some of you may have taken a day off to be here, so if you did, thank you. It shows your dedication to your job and to servicing Pasco County and the visitors in the jail. So, you know, it's dangerous. You never know what's going to happen inside there, and, you know, just glad that you're here today to be recognized, coming out of the shadows, if you will. We appreciate you. We recognize your efforts and your work. So, again, to J.J. and your team, doors open. You have questions, concerns, help us understand what we're doing. It's five new jailers essentially, just holler at us and happy to learn from you. So, good to see you today.
Mr. Mariana? Yes. I'd like to thank you all for your service as well. It's a dangerous position that you're in. It's a very important position that you're in, and all the things you've got to deal with, as far as watching contraband fights, et cetera. So, greatly appreciate it. We wanted to give you all the resources we can, starting with the new building, so hopefully get the right number of employees for you too. So, thank you all.
I'm going to take it that y'all left some folks on duty while you came here, which would be normal to do. J.J., would you like to say something?
Real quick, Mike, right before, I just want to point out, in the year and a half since we've taken over control, many of the people, the men and women standing behind me, were on mandatory overtime, meaning when their families scheduled birthday parties, they had to miss them. When they had doctor's appointments, they had to miss them. They stepped up for this county when we were the most vulnerable. So, I'd like to take a moment to give them a round of applause, because what they sacrificed, not a lot of people, he mentioned, behind the scenes. It wasn't behind my scenes. I noticed it, and I really am appreciative of their efforts. So, I just want to thank you all.
Mr. Kabala?
Yeah, I'm going to echo a lot of the sentiment here. You know, we've learned a lot in about the past 18, 19 months since Corrections has come over to the county, and just have learned so much from an administrator perspective, and even as a citizen, you know, the behind-the-scenes work that you guys do to not only carry out sentence, but rehabilitate, and, you know, the clerk listed a laundry list of other duties, you know, caregiver, mental health, court. I mean, you guys really do a lot of unsung hero work. So, we're just very happy to be able to, you know, recognize the Corrections Department for all that you do. I had a fantastic talker, the lieutenant, and one of your sergeants on Corrections Week, so that podcast will come out. Learned a lot more about what was going on, and learned a lot about you guys. And so, just so thankful that you are there, keeping us safe. A lot of our first responders, you know, they get in, they get out. You guys are in it for the long game, and so we really truly appreciate that.
I'd like to say that not only this group of people appreciate y'all being there and doing the job you do for us, but you've got to be real thankful when you think about the money or the bond money that was raised based on the citizens of Pasco County voting to make sure we had extra beds in our jail system to where we could take care of. Actually, we weren't taking care of the detention center at the time we did that, but we do have it there, and that's what's provided, the extra beds. And we were hoping to get a lot more beds, but due to inflation and supply chain, things got changed around a bit, and it cost a lot more to provide what we're doing. But we're here to support you, and we will continue supporting you for the job you do for all of us. Thank you. I believe I'll just go down, and y'all stay up here this time, so.
I don't even have to ask. You know what to do.
Well-trained.
Are y'all on time?
This is time certain, so.
Okay. He's early, that's good.
You are. All right, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-113, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the week of May 6th through 10th, 2024, as Economic Development Week in Pasco County. Whereas Economic Development Week is an event created by the International Economic Development Council to celebrate the achievements of economic developers. ANRAZ, since 1926, the International Economic Development Council has been a leader and driving force in advancing economic development initiatives, with a steadfast commitment to fostering growth and prosperity in communities of all sizes through equity, inclusion, sustainability, resilience, and innovation. ANRAZ, more than 100,000 economic development or related professionals worldwide are committed to creating, retaining, and expanding opportunities that facilitate long-term equitable community growth. ANRAZ, the economic development profession cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions sustainability and resiliency, boosts economic prosperity, enhances quality of life, and builds robust tax basis. ANRAZ economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments. Private, public-private partnerships, chamber of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. ANRAZ economic development professionals serve as stewards, bridging connections between community stakeholders, such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, and educational administrators, to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancements, and an optimistic future. ANRAZ, since 1987, the Pasco County, the Pasco Economic Development Council, EDC, has served as the lead economic development organization dedicated to the overall growth and prosperity of Pasco County through the development of a sustainable and diversified economy. ANRAZ, since 1996, the Pasco EDC has assisted companies through business expansions and relocations resulting in nearly $3 billion in capital investments and over 21,000 new jobs in Pasco County. ANRAZ economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and contribute to the betterment and progress of Pasco County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares the week of May 6th through 10th, 2024, as Economic Development Week in Pasco County, and recognizes the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding opportunities, bettering lives, and moving society forward in Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 7th day of May 2024.
Second.
Got a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Mr. Crone?
Well, thank you again. Let me first say, it is a great week in Pasco County, as we continue to celebrate successes today with so many people in the room that make up a part of what we do. As you mentioned, there's over 100,000 people that are involved in economic development around the United States. I'm a board member of the IEDC, the International Economic Development Council. We have 4,500 members, and we're all competing for business, but we're all doing it with the heart of our community in mind. It is a team sport. I'm here together with our county partners, with David Engel from the Office of Economic Growth, but also included are all of you and everyone else in this room when we look at economic development. I think this week gives us the opportunity to really talk about what economic development is, and I think a lot of people see ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings and things like that, and that's what they think about economic development. But they forget also about the time that we spend with our existing companies, with our startups, with our workforce development, with our safety partners and security, with our utilities and our county partners, and then especially our elected officials as well, too. You all have a part of this in keeping costs low and making sure that it's not just about jobs, it's ultimately about our citizens living the kind of lives that they want to live. So, when you hear jobs and you hear capital investment, think about the life of your neighbors and everyone here that's able to do what they want to do and live the kind of life that they want to live, and prosper while they're doing it. So, we thank you guys as well, too, and salute the board for keeping our costs low and being efficient and being pro-business, but it's not just about us. Our team is out doing economic development today. I've got someone at the SOIR Show, the World Plastics Show, and I'll be heading to SOF Week as soon as I leave here today. So, we're out doing the work for the county. I'd like to ask if David Engel, our partner, would like to say a few words as well from the county perspective?
Mr. Engel?
Thank you, Bill. David Engel, Planning and Economic Growth Director. I wanted just to thank the board for the support you've given over the six years I've been here. When I first walked in the door back in 2018, we had a very specific, focused Economic Growth and Development Program through our job creation incentives and our partners at the EDC, facilitating businesses moving into the county. But in that time, our portfolio of tools has expanded greatly because of this board. We support small business, we focus on job skills creation, we even are training and educating homeless people and getting them into jobs and off the street. We do so many things, and our new chapter is going to be redevelopment and revitalization of our rural and depressed areas. So, thank you so much, and it's been great working with Bill for the six years I've been here. Thanks.
Mr. Mariana?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, from Pasco County from years ago to the economic powerhouse it's going now, as far as being number one commercially, as far as development goes, is a big testament to both you gentlemen and the whole team behind you. Listening to your membership numbers is staggering, that's out there. But I think the focus that you've brought to Pasco County, bringing business in, opportunities galore, and you keep on bringing those opportunities home, so greatly appreciate all your great work. Thank you.
Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, no, we wouldn't be as successful as we are without the formula that works. Corrections, fire, you name it. Business sector, ag folks here, it's really, it's truly, like you said, a team effort across all levels, all functions. And it's no secret that Pasco County is the place to be. Now the fastest-growing Tampa Bay area, the fastest-growing area in the nation for young families. Our average age is 46 years old now. It went from, what, one of the oldest counties in the state, to now we're a little less gray-haired. But, you know, it's an exciting time, important decisions to be made. Yours is a solar panel. Exciting time, big decisions to be made, and we thank you all for guiding us and giving us the tools and the due diligence that we need to make the best decisions. So, thank you all.
Mr. Kabala?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would just like to underscore, it's so important to have a diversified economy for just a ton of reasons, and I can really think of really no greater public investment in trying to, you know, make these things come along. And so, you know, when we put forward these public investments, we create jobs, we create a vibrant economy, we create just a, you know, a wonderful society that our citizens can enjoy their liberty and prosperity. So, I just thank you. Thank you for what you do on that, and I thank this board, too, for making those public investments. I think we've got one coming up here later this morning as well, so.
Yep. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, David. The work both of y'all do, it kind of coincides, and it grows together, because for every residential development we bring in, we bring in not only two or three businesses that come in along with it, but more than that, that actually are helping pay and keep the abalone tax down on our citizens on their houses and all. But it's a lot of good things that Pasco's never seen before, where you can actually, other than the cow folks, they can work and live here because they've got that, they've got to keep their property together to be able to do that, so. But the fact of it is, like citrus and other ag products have gone away. So, these things coming in to keep our taxes on our residents' houses and things of that nature down, and abalone coming in to do the things we need to do for our citizens while they live and live and work and play here in this county is great things. So, thank you both for your part of all of this. Okay. Move on to.
Picture?
Picture.
You gonna do a picture?
Oh, I better go picture. Okay, next item?
All right, our next resolution. If you are here for Public Works Week, if you could please step to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. I will go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-107, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week in Pasco County. Whereas Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the citizens of Pasco County. Andres, these infrastructures and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Pasco County's Public Works Professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees responsible for rehabilitating, improving, maintaining, and protecting Pasco County's transportation network, public buildings, and stormwater infrastructure that are essential to Pasco County citizens. Andres, it is in the public's best interest for civic leaders, residents, and children of Pasco County to gain knowledge of and to maintain progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. Andres, efficiency of the qualified, dedicated, and talented employees who staff Public Works is materially influenced by their can-do attitude and an understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Andres National Public Works Weeks became an educational campaign in 1960, and 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Andres, in 2024, National Public Works Week's theme is "Advancing Quality of Life for All", which pays tribute to our Public Works Professionals and recognizes their substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week in Pasco County, and encourages all citizens to support public works activities this week and throughout the year. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 7th day of May 2024.
Full approval.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. So, who's our spokesperson here today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you so much. I really appreciate being here today. Thanks to the board for all the support that you give Public Works. I'm Jason Mickel, Director of Public Works, and I do want to extend another thank you to Commissioner Mariano for supporting and sponsoring this resolution. I want to thank Mike Cabala, who's been very supportive, and of course, everybody knows Brantford. He is sort of passing the baton on to me, you know, it's been a little bit of a little bit of a tongue, but it's happening.
After battle in here, too.
But I do, I do want to, you know, thank the team here. So, I wanted to bring everybody, right, but all 260 or so folks couldn't be here. Someone's got to fill the potholes, you know, someone's got to be out there, you know, handling flooding issues. The team does amazing work. It's kind of like the mail, right? Their work never stops. They're always, always doing something. For anybody who doesn't know, just briefly, you have a lot of your frontline people here. These are the folks that deal directly with our customers. They do an awesome job dealing with customers on a daily basis, doing it politely, professionally, and effectively. The team here does a fantastic job. I couldn't say enough about them. The other thing I want to mention, just real briefly, is, you know, when a storm comes, we're about a month away from our hurricane season, which we're all, you know, many of the folks in this room are all part of. But, you know, we don't just deal with hurricanes and major storm events, we deal with fronts that come through. Anytime there'll be a slight flooding issue, these are the guys that are out there filling sandbags, manning sandbag stations, getting pumps ready, mowing ditches, cleaning out storm drains. They're the ones that are out there sacrificing their time away from their families to make sure that our community's safe. So, I, again, I appreciate all the great work that they do. I appreciate all the support from our leadership and from our board, and, you know, and today's a great, it's a great week to have Public Works Week, but it's always Public Works Day, right? We're always, we're always doing something in Public Works. And I'd like to also extend thanks to our branch. Overall, you know, we work closely with our branch and the safety team, just keeping everybody safe and keeping our community safe. So, Brantford, do you like to say that?
Well, you said it all.
Oh, you always can say more.
Well, Jason said it all. In Public Works, I've always said that Public Works interacts with the public, you know, and that is the reason why everybody gets a whole lot of calls, right? The stormwater, the roads, the traffic signs, you know, if something's not working, citizens are interacting with it. And it's a very challenging job, you know, and I think the team has been doing very wonderful. Jason has just taken off just like that to get things done, and we do really appreciate the work that you do, you all.
Thank you.
Well, while I've got you at the podium, don't step away.
Sidewalk?
All of my folks from District 1, the cattle people that are here today, here you tell me that, yes, because you have 50% of landmass of the county, you get 50% of all the paving.
I hear that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I was going to talk about what I'm showing pictures of right now, of a project that was just done, just because under committee reports, it was such a great thing that everyone did out there. The people in the Irbark Grayberg area, for years, were always flooding out, flooding out, and I felt bad every time I went to emergency services, coming in, and you guys have to be there because we've got so much stuff going on, we got to keep everybody there to go fix the stuff. And even talking to your crew about trying to like, what can we do ahead of time? From putting the MSD unit together, where we studied everything, the maintenance activity, the performance that you guys are doing out there is fantastic. It's so great, we've got such a professional team, that I could look at a problem coming up, and we have this, this whole neighborhood that's right there that was shown, goes underwater consistently with a big storm. We found out by talking about it, looking at it, and the team, Brantford, Jason, I'm going to mention a few more names, Tim, Jess, Tim, Wes, Mike, Allison, Gina, Jonah, Fig, getting everybody together in the room to talk about, okay, what can we do instead of the whole process to get something done? So, we had opportunities around this aqua plant on Jasmine, from Jasmine Palm Terrace, around the whole thing, it's like potential, we're on the right way, we could actually dig some stuff out, get the water, where at least can percolate instead of going in the road sitting there. And then you saw the long stretches, the long spray field that's there, that's no longer pumping because it's been disconnected, but there was an opportunity there to get all that drainage. I don't know how many square feet we got, but those two long stretches there, the whole neighborhood, all the water comes down that stretch and goes right in there and puddles in. The last storm we had probably two months ago, they were all flooded out. And I know you guys don't want to be out there putting those sticks in the grounds and orange barricades saying you can't drive here. We'd rather like beat these situations. This right here, this improvement is going to, I think, get us through the storm season where these people won't flood. By cleaning out some pipes that were down there, I know there's a little more work to do out there, but the work you've done even right now is going to be a dramatic improvement for these people. And the difference it makes is, one of the ladies who used to live in the end of that used to work for emergency room, and when she would flood out, she'd have to go like a day early, hours early, just to get there. All those other people had different inconveniences, so what do you guys do to help people stay in their homes, not flood out? I can't thank you enough, because I used to have a loop that'd take me like eight hours in a day to go check everything was flooding up and down the coast. It's so short now, it's awesome, because I know we get the right things in place, doing the right thing. So, as someone who's watched over this closely over the years, I greatly appreciate Brantford, when you first came on, you took a trip with me to go look at everything that was going on. Jason, you've been great working with getting things done. How do we get things done? And Mike, for the great work you do with so many things, this is just another one, putting the right people in position and empowering them to get the work done. So, I just want to say, I can't thank you guys enough for the great work you do.
Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. Echoing same sentiments, Brantford, Jason, Fig, the team, you know, not all heroes in this county, where Kevlar vests, carry a gun and a taser. You guys and gals take care of some of the most valuable assets people have, which is their homes and their property here in Pasco County, and keeping them from being flooded. Help their cars stay healthy, because our roads and paths are fixed, and they're fixed timely. So, the work that you all do is 24/7, 365, while you know, public might not see it all the time, they see a problem, and it just magically gets fixed, right? You guys step up to the plate, day in and day out, good weather, bad, hot or cold, and take care of the work that needs to be done. So, it's an honor to recognize all of you today and all of your efforts and all of your great works throughout our county, because you really help keep the quality and the value of our county at the highest standard it can be, with such a large task at hand. So, pleasure to have you all today.
Well, I tell you, if it wasn't for y'all, we wouldn't see what's being done sometimes, all the work you do. But Mike, you want to say something to Public Works?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And I'm just, again, thank you. You know, public infrastructure, specifically roads, it underpins modern economies and society, because without it, nothing gets done. And just what you do day in, day out, we've hit on, you know, protecting property. You guys do that, ensuring that folks can get to point A, point B, and do it safely, is just, it's a calling, and I just thank you all for answering that call, because it's hard work, often dangerous work, and you put yourselves out there for it. So, thank you.
Yep. I tell you, they were joking about pothos earlier, but the fact of it is, when Brantford put in that system where if you called it in today, tomorrow, the next day, you definitely had your potho filled up, and you're going about business without, you know, knocking your alignment out of your car or your truck, whatever, so. But it happens, and it works. And one of my neighbors is one that told me that process was being done. I said, you got to be kidding. So, we called it in the next morning, and it was done. So, it's been a good system, and it's worked. I mean, years and years ago, I used to call Pasco County's paving system was where they had three or four guys behind a truck with pavement and they had shovels. So, some of our roads still look like that, which we're going to get changed in the near future, so. It's all good, and I appreciate everything that you, each of you are doing your jobs, so. Makes a difference in Pasco County, so. And thank you. I'll come down and take a picture with you and rest of your stay up here.
What is it? My resolutions? I'm going down.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll keep it balanced.
You may be last, but you're not forgotten, I can tell you that, so.
This one's on consent?
This one's on consent, but we're reading it.
Yes, and on the record, if you could say we're pulling it from consent.
This is on the poll sheet for C7, to be pulled from consent.
Agreed. I see it on the record.
Okay.
All right. So, resolution regarding international beef bonds, if you are here for that, please step to the podium.
All of you can leave. Pretty good group.
That's right.
Y'all were supposed to bring steak dinner, but I don't remember.
I know. Was there any samples? I will go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-112, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the month of May 2024 as International Beef Month in Pasco County. Whereas International Beef Month is a time to recognize the importance of the beef industry and to celebrate the farmers and ranchers who work hard every day to raise and care for cattle, while also preserving the land and environment. Andres, the beef industry involves thousands of American farmers, ranchers, and processors who help keep the economy strong and food on our tables. Andres beef is an important source of nutrients that are vital for supporting good health, such as protein, vitamin B12, zinc, iron, phosphorus, and selenium. Andres, the United States is the world's largest beef producer and is the second-largest consumer of beef in the world, with an average of 58.8 pounds of beef consumed per person in 2023. Andres, Florida ranked 18th in total inventory of cows on January 1st, 2024, with a count of 1.56 million cows. Andres, by choosing to buy local and high-quality beef products, we help support the livelihood of those directly involved in the industry. This support helps pave the way to a more suitable and ethical industry, prioritizing the welfare of animals and the environment. Andres, Pasco County farmers and ranchers work hard every day to provide us with high-quality beef products, helping support the local economy and creating more jobs for Pasco County community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares the month of May 2024 as International Beef Month in Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 7th day of May 2024.
Full approval.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Now, who's the spokesperson for this group?
I guess that would be me, so. Hi, my name is Ben Bartle. I'm the current president of the Pasco County Cattlemen's Association. On behalf of the County Cattlemen's Association, today we also have the Cattle Women's Association. We have Farm Bureau with us as well, and we also have IFIS in the back with us. And, did I forget anybody? Eph Dax is right over here, thank you, Mr. Eph. But thank you very much for the recognition. It means a great deal to us. We got to hear some pretty fun facts earlier, but one thing that I'd like to share with you is, yes, Pasco, I think you said, or rather, Florida, is, we're not in the top 10 anymore, but we were the first state in the country, and actually, the continent, to have cattle. So, with that, we're proud of our product, and we're proud of what we've been able to produce, and we really thank you very much for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pasco County Cattle Women's Association is the largest cattle women's association in the state of Florida. We have over 100 members, and we get out there and promote the beef industry every day in Pasco County. Tomorrow, we're going to Weston Chapel High School and speak to the students and do live cooking demonstrations. We had a really big dance last Saturday for our youth, so we're really out there with the youth and really sharing our story with the county of Pasco County. Thank you all for having us today. Thank you. Could you also state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Casey Holloway. I am the president of Pasco County Cattle Women.
Thank you.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you, guys. If there's anything we can do in the county to help you grow your business or stay stable, I mean, please let us know. Our reliable food supply is critical, it's great for the economy, so, and keeping a diversified economy, you know, your industry is huge to us, so whatever we can do to help, please let us know. Thank you.
Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. It was nice to hear all the vitamins in beef, but I never ate it for vitamins. It tastes good. So, it's a pleasure to have you both, the cattle woman and cattleman here today, and see some familiar faces. I think it's important that we, you know, oftentimes, as Pasco County's moving forward, we recognize all these high-tech businesses and what have you that come into town, and all along, you all have been there as, you know, ground floor for Pasco County for many, many generations and decades. And to see several generations of you still here, working and farming in Pasco County, is just pretty incredible to see, and we hope that that continues to happen. So, I echo Commissioner Mariano's sentiments. If there's anything that Pasco County can do to help you get out of your way, bring eyes to your attention, just help solve a problem, holler at us, let us be a resource for you, and pleasure to have you today.
Well, welcome. Glad to see you folks in here. I'd rather be out by the barbecue grill when y'all cooking steak right now. But the fact of it is, the best thing we can do is keep your prices up so you can stay in business out there and be able to afford, because people, when the prices sometimes drops so low, it's just unbelievable how low they get. But right here lately, they stay like they are. we get more, keep more prices as long as they won't bail out and sell their land because they're tired of getting nothing for their, their hard labors. So, thank you. Okay, I'll come down. Y'all want to come down with me, too?
Sure.
Might as well. Come on.
Everybody's going up? Okay, everybody, ready here first, please? Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Will we move through that? Pretty well. So, now it's time for the consent agenda. Okay, I have a poll sheet. I have, well, C-7, we've already taken, we've pulled and discussed and taken care of. That was a cattaman. Do you believe that, right?
That is correct.
Yep, that was a cattaman. And then, C-16 is withdrawn. C-34 is pull and revise. And then, N-124 is withdrawn. Do I have a motion for the, or is there any other items that wish to be pulled at this time from consent agenda? Anybody?
Move approval of the amended consent agenda?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Okay, we'll take up C-34.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Chairman, Alex Parnes, County Surveyor. C-34, yes, it is our recommendation for a quick pull and revise. There is a error in the subject line in the agenda memo. We've got the revised document here. Quick swap-out, switcheroo, and we don't impede the process or, or the schedule of this agenda item at all.
Move approval of the amended page?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the consent agenda. We will move on to, believe it or not, regular items before noon. Oh, wait a minute. What we got? Oh, we got a regular item.
Yes, R-53.
That's, that's correct. It's, it's a small matter. I'll be done.
Okay. I'll just, I don't want to look over you.
Good morning, David Engel.
Good morning.
Planning and Economic Growth Director, and I am very proud today to present the last piece of a puzzle up at I-75 and 52. This area is a very important regional employment and tax generating area. We're gonna have 12 to 13 million square feet in and around this intersection. And this is one of the most important components of that development. Got you, sir. I have so much patience, I should have been a doctor. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. The, the developer and the counterparty in this economic development agreement is LandCo Liquidating, mixed use and also residential. It's a partnership. The lead partner is the Heinz Group. They're a national developer located in Texas. They currently have about $100 million worth of real estate assets in their management portfolio. They develop, they, they provide expertise, real estate management services, and also master development. The company has fingerprints here in Tampa Bay. They built our wonderful Astoria MPUD over in Odessa on State Road 54. And they also are a lead and instrumental partner in the new Rays Stadium and redevelopment area in St. Petersburg. So, they're, they're notable and they provide excellent development. The property, the property is located, again, in the south, the northwestern quadrant of I-75 and State Road 52. The property is 785 acres. It is located in the I-75 Gateway Employment Center. And this proposed development consists of 3 million square feet of industrial, 500,000 square feet of office, 190,000 square feet of retail, a 250-room hotel, and about 2,300 dwelling units. The idea is to create a vibrant mixed-use destination that's, focus is job creation and tax generation. The benefits of this project are as follows. The developer will install key infrastructure, including roadways and utilities and services, major employment center. The incentive that we're gonna propose today will accelerate the development and create pad-ready or development-ready areas of the project. And might I add, it's very important because the demand now for that area of the county is very robust. And we want to speed up the development so we can be, capture all of the economic development that will transpire in the region. Now that I-4 is getting built out, this is the next place to, to create jobs and to pay taxes. Also, it'll accelerate design and construction of critical on- and off-site roadway work, especially relieving the congestion at I-75 and State Road 52 for the future. The project, you'll note, is several-fold on road infrastructure. The first phase is Vision Road AE, which is the extension north of Old Pasco Road, going northbound over State Road 52. There'll be a four-way intersection. And it'll extend north, in a northern direction into the Gateway Employment Area, where you have your 3.5 million square feet of job creation development. And most importantly, Vision Road AD, which is the Ozzy-Murphy bypass, will construct a two-lane passenger vehicle and orange-belt trail under I-75, interconnecting the Target Facility, which is owned by North Point Development. Now, this infrastructure is critical because during peak hour, for vehicles inbound or outbound, whether it be AM or PM peak and not using I-75, there's a clear way of getting around that intersection and avoiding the I-75 area. So, we're relieving the, the future congestion with all the employment that we have in the area. The, the project will consist of about 75 million square feet of infrastructure. And the incentive request is 29.3 million, using ad valorem equivalency grant, where we pay the developer bag for taxes paid in the previous year. The construction schedule is, is before you. Their construction start date on the on- and off-site improvements will commence on 3/31/28. I have a feeling it'll start quicker. And they're targeting completion at the mid, mid-year calendar year 29. So, the impact of this project is very significant. Net the $29.3 million incentive, the general fund will capture $107 million in 20 years. That, that's equivalent to an average of $5.4 million a year flowing directly into the general fund. And we've, we've accounted for debt service for bonds and the MSTUs and all the additional charges. This is net cash flow. The project, once completed, will generate, in today's dollars and present value, $327 million in the gross domestic product. And I believe there'll be more than 2,800 jobs, but that's the minimum in our model. So, I will always project a conservative number. And here are the features with this incentive package before you. No incentives will be paid out. We'll be collecting tax dollars but not paying out incentives until the project receives 500,000 square feet of certificate of occupancies. All county economic funding is performance-based. The developer will have to submit invoices after they install and do the work. We check the work, we check the invoices, and then we release funds. So, there's no automatic distribution of funds without deliverables. Lastly, and very important, we're not allowing in the MPUD the ability to loom out of the employment development with residential and retail. So, that is the, that's the basis of my recommendation. I would just tell you that in your packet, you have some very detailed exhibits. And one exhibit, which is the off-site improvement, you'll see there's an extensive amount of water and sewer work that has to be done to create this employment opportunity for the county. Any, I, I'm here for questions and any audience, Clark Cobby and his client, if you have any questions, or maybe we could introduce them and get to know them a little bit. Lane Gardner is the Heinz representative.
Mr. Whiteman?
Thank you, Chair. This is Engel question. When we're going through, this is, I believe, the largest one I've seen since my time here. As we're going through projects like this, we're looking at these incentives, you know, we're coming into budget time, and the, the battle for dollars is there. And with all the, all the business and folks that are coming in, is a part of this formula gonna capture enough funds for policing in these projects? How does that work within your formula?
Well, the formula doesn't account for local services. The formula accounts for net coverage of, of their taxes plus providing enormous revenue. And now, there was another project, I believe, in the beginning of your term, sir. That was the Pasco Town Center renovation. Now, it's called Double Branch. This project is more cost-effective and, and efficient than, than that Double Branch project, which was a little bit larger. So, I believe, since it's dominated by employment generation, that, that the police requirement for this project will be very minor.
Okay. Okay. Chairman, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I really, I really like this project. 3 million square feet of industrial is huge. The office use of a half a million, retail of 190. And the hotel, I think, is gonna fit out perfectly. And I'm gonna have to balance with the residential, but I really love the state residential. That's gonna be up for the higher executives to come in as well. So, this project will be, I think, a, a great addition to us. And until they build all the good stuff, they're not gonna get any money anyway. And it's all, the net offset's so huge that, over time, it's, it's, it helps them get the project through, brings jobs quicker. It's, it's a good thing for us.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's a good project for us. Have no problems with it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. 3-0.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to...
That's it?
...Vicodin's business. Mr. Whiteman?
I'm good to go. I think you might share some of the things we were at. So, I'll pass.
Okay.
Good, I might need the room.
What are you gonna do?
How many you got? What side you have? What position you have first?
You had a big smile there, Chairman.
I do. It's kind of, I usually have that many things, but I have a few this week and all this, two weeks.
All right. So, we had, at Merrill Brothers, I don't if you remember, years ago, we used to have trouble with how to deal with the bio solids or how to deal with the waste. We had trouble taking it down to Miami. The costs were going through the roof. So, we brought Merrill Brothers in, and they have done a phenomenal job. They're just releasing now the Florida Green Fertilizer, which should be a, a great boost for us. And in the interim of the government USAID program, they've been working with the country of Jordan. And they brought in some very high-level people from Jordan to go see what we were doing. So, Merrill Brothers did a great job presenting. Our, our team did a great job presenting. I was there to greet them. And it was very impressive and really cool to be able to tell them all the great things that we had done and how they want to copy us. So, there's a whole delegation that was there that, that's in the new building that Merrill's just got coming up now. Had different talking things to go through. We talked about how we started with a waste energy plant, how we then looked to convert those big piles to road basin cement, the very cement we're standing on was from our waste energy plant. And there's Mr. Merrill there talking about what they're doing on their end. And literally, when you do a public-private partnership, there's always the risk of what's gonna happen. That's one of the, the excellency there. And his assistant, that was phenomenal. They gave us a nice gift. And by the way, we'll talk about this at some later point, but a really nice gift, kind of like we had from the German folks. They gave us a nice little plate. They have a nice one of their own as well. And I think Pasco County should probably look at getting one of those ready for dignitaries like this here as they come in. This kind of shows you the final stage with taking the bio solids. That little trip up there is the final stage. That actually takes all the pathogens out to where it's like 10, when it could be 1,000 components of it, done with such a low number. And that's what they really like because they really want to deal with it. They love the soil aspect that comes out of it. That was the plate that they had given me, they'll hang in my office proudly. But it was really neat to have this presented to us. It was, it was an impressive way to say thanks. So, we're gonna look to give them all the information we can. They said, so far, it's the most impressive facility they've been to yet. So, I think it all, all in all, internationally, we look good. Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in on that because it was one of the first projects we worked on when it came here into the county. And I will say what is impressive about it is it's a bio, bio solids facility that actually works because it's so simple. And, and, and what, what Merrill has brought in in terms of innovation to the county helped solve our bio solids problem. It, it, and it provides just a, it's innovative but simple way to really get to Class AA bio solids where others have tried and, and failed oftentimes. So, it's something that Pasco can truly be proud of.
Yeah, I'd say, years ago, when we first looked at what to go do, we just threw our ideas out there for the RFP. But when, went down to Lee County and watched the way they had done, is they had done a big outdoor facility, which lets the fumes go away, gets a little smelly, so we had plenty of room around them. This facility here is kind of like a greenhouse that takes all the heat and come in. So, you don't need solar panels. The sun comes right through and it heats everything up there. And I will, I will tell you, they have kept the facility. It looks, you know, I won't say brand new, but it looks fantastic shape. They really maintained it well. But by taking that, that last step with the heater the way we do it, we can actually get it at such a... And in interim of the government USAID program, they've been working with the country of Jordan, and they brought in some very high-level people from Jordan to go see what we were doing. So Merrill Brothers did a great job presenting, our team did a great job presenting, I was there to greet them, and it was very impressive and really cool to be able to tell them all the great things that we had done and how they want to copy us. So there's a whole delegation that was there that, that's in the new building that Merrill has just got coming up now. Had different talking things to go through, we talked about how we started with a waste energy plant, how we then looked to convert those big piles to road-based cement, the very cement we're standing on was from our waste energy plant. And there's Mr. Merrill there talking about what they're doing on their end. And literally, when you do a public-private partnership, there's always the risk of what's going to happen. That's one of the, the excellency there, and his assistant that was phenomenal, they gave us a nice gift, and by the way, we'll talk about this at some later point, but a really nice gift, kind of like we had from the German folks, they gave us a nice little plate, they have a nice one of their own as well, and I think Pasco County should probably look at getting one of those ready for dignitaries like this here as they come in. This kind of shows you the final stage with taking the biosolids, that little trip up there is the final stage, that actually takes all the pathogens out to where it's like 10, when it could be 1,000 components of it, that was such a low number, and that's what they really like because they really want to deal with it. They love the soil aspect that comes out of it. That was the plate that they had given me, they'll hang in my office proudly, but it was really neat to have this presented to us, it was an impressive way to say thanks. So we're going to look to give them all the information we can, they said so far, it's the most impressive facility they've been to yet. So I think it all, all in all, internationally, we look good. Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in on that because it was one of the first projects we worked on when it came here into the county, and I will say what is impressive about it is it's a biosolids facility that actually works because it's so simple, and what Merrill has brought in in terms of innovation to the county helps solve our biosolids problem, and it provides just a innovative but simple way to really get to Class AA biosolids where others have tried and failed oftentimes, so it's something that Pasco can truly be proud of.
Yeah, I'd say, years ago, when we first looked at what to go do, we just threw our ideas out there for the RFP, but when, went down to Lee County and watched the way they had done, is they had done a big outdoor facility, which lets the fumes go away, gets a little smelly, so we had plenty of room around them. This facility is kind of like a greenhouse that takes all the heat to come in, so, you don't even solar panels, the sun comes right through and it heats everything up there. And I will tell you, they have kept the facility, it looks, you know, I won't say brand-new, but it looks fantastic shape, they really maintained it well. But by taking that, that last step with the heater, the way we do it, we can actually get it at such a low level, it's very easy to sell, which we're going to start doing now, and it's easy to promote anywhere around. So Merrill Brothers has done a phenomenal job for us, saving us a bunch of money, the cost to dispose now is going through the roof, so we are protected by all that for a very long time. I'm in good shape. Next set of slides. Permitting Day. So we passed a resolution last month trying to help those people that needed help getting permits that maybe were stuck, they had maybe done work on, done work that didn't get permitted, we're kind of waiving the double fees to bring them in. It also took situations where they couldn't get it resolved, as far as what to do in the house they already bought, to get it resolved. I want to say, I'm going to do a resolution the next meeting coming up, but all these folks that are out here, they all volunteered to go out and help our citizens for the day on Saturday. Gave up their family day Saturday to be out there. And I tell you, there was a lot of smile on the face of this gentleman here, he was there first thing in the morning, he was nervous as can be, and left with a huge smile. The lady right beside him was raving all the great work was done, we got a couple more coming in here. There was the sign that was out there, and I really think we should probably do another one at maybe Regency Park Library, just to kind of create this awareness, but what it did for all these people that are all, like, that one guy thumbs up, four years he'd been struggling for a little rail, for a little steps going into his house to try to find a way to get it approved because it was done before he was there, or done without a permit, they got him through the process. The folks in the center there, again, thrilled, technology that, top of the screen there, that's something that I wanted to see staff bring back, it is a time saver, it helps not only our people get through things quicker, but they can even show citizens if need be to what needs to be done and what's going on out there.
What were some of that guy's steps?
They weren't permitted, so to try.
Were they to code?
They were to code, but you've got to get the engineering to prove it and all that stuff.
Oh yeah, okay.
So it was like, and it was only that high, I thought it was like an elevated one, it was like, going up like 12 feet, but it was literally on the ground, so they found a way to get it done, he's doing a contractor-owner permit for it, and he's getting through the process now.
Yeah.
So I think it's a great thing for us to.
That's good.
Help the people that don't know how to get out of the situation they're in, and it goes through, there's a picture at the end, which, again, it was so great, all those people there volunteered to help our citizens, and I think it's a message I want to, I want to resonate with, the attitude of every one of those people there, and I think the whole permitting part, they want to get things done, they want help, so I'm very proud of them, very happy, it was, it was great hanging out with them for the day.
Yeah, that's good.
And went to a conference that was put on by the Tampa Build Association, and had a great number of speakers, Blaise Noli was there, One Our Homes had a big representative, and they had a lot of good people from around the world talking about different things about how to work with housing, not affordable, but housing. And one of the things that came up, they tried this a while ago, and you'll probably hear, see it on TV, was additional dwelling units. In California, they tried it, they put so many restrictions in for the first three years they hardly did any. Then they lightened up the restrictions, and they started bringing more. I would like our team to go take a look at it, bring something back to us to go take a look at these, I think done right, they can be a great addition for a family that, let's say, wants to have mother or father, grandmother move in, you can add a unit on, make it work. So many times we have big residential lots that could actually work with these as well. So I think we've got a great opportunity, and if it helps a family stay together, I think it's a great thing. If it helps a person that wants to make a little bit of extra income with a property they have, and they have many other assets in this day of time, keeping the unit small enough to make it work, can be a great benefit too. So we could make that come up, I'll share this document that I got with me that we can take a look at.
Okay.
I think that's all I have. Okay. And again, I just put a shout-out on the Ranch Road project at Palm Lake Terrace.
Right.
They did a phenomenal job in Iron Bark, whatever, by, in the next two weeks, that whole area's going to be in so much better shape. And so our team's doing a phenomenal job.
Right.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Kabala?
Nothing, nothing big, I just want to thank the board again for the various recognition of the team members. I think as Commissioner Waitman put it, it was really interesting, we had so many resolutions today, but healthcare, food supply, infrastructure, first responders, there's a lot of unsung heroes out there that quite honestly deserve recognition, so I just, on behalf of the administrative team, just really appreciate you recognizing our folks for the great work that they do day in, day out. I look forward to it too, as we go through, I'm beginning my weeks now of reviewing their various budgets before we come to our workshop in June, so it's always great to have that recognition going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Town Center.
I don't have anything for you today, thank you.
Not at all?
Not at all.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have something fun.
Okay.
My office partners with the Pasco County School Board, and students from K through 12th grade donate artwork, well, actually, their teachers pick out artwork, I should say, and we display their artwork in our judicial centers in both the east and west side, in the courthouses. And if you ever come to the courthouse, it's probably not a great day in your life, you know, it's a pretty, pretty tough times, and it's very stressful, and having their artwork on the walls changes the entire atmosphere of the courthouse. And it's just beautiful artwork, and what we do is we change out the artwork every year, and we change it out late in April, and we host a artist reception, and we have cake and punch, and we invite many to come, and it was a beautiful, beautiful recognition of our student artists. So if you are in the courthouses, if you would love, I would love it, if you'd look around at the beautiful artwork, and we have comment cards available, so when we give it back to the students next year, we also send the comment cards and what their artwork meant to individuals coming to the courthouse. So good things, I just wanted to say that, and I greatly appreciate the partnership with Pasco County Schools to do that. That's it, thank you.
That's it. Yes, Mr. Waitman?
To the clerk, sorry I missed this year, I had soccer.
That's okay, you were there last year.
But to see how excited the kids are to show off their work to their parents and their siblings, and they have some, some of the teachers go, superintendents there, and walk around, and they, their friends show each other their work and what they did, it's a happy time, and it's a wonderful program that you all do, and I think that the kids and the families really do appreciate it. More, more getting that opportunity than maybe even the cake, but just, great, great job there.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not going to do mine now, I'm going to wait till the end of the day and do mine, and, well, maybe I'm going to do it now. How about today? Throw that picture back up? Put it back. You're forcing me, but. Yeah, we, last Friday at 10 o'clock, they had the law enforcement memorial service right out here on the corner of the courthouse grounds, and at a point where we're very close of having the memorial done, we're waiting on a statue of an angel lifting up a fallen officer, and it's out of bronze, and my friend Sheriff Grady Judd said, our artist that we're using, because Poe County's getting one of those statues also, he is the best to get that artwork and that bronze statue from, but he's also the slowest. So, since I started helping out with that plate, I've been waiting two and a half years for that, that statue to come, and it's still not here yet. So hopefully, in the very near future, we'll be seeing that, and it'll be a great day. I don't, I don't know if it's going to come when the days are shorter, and if it has to wait that long, I hate to see it wait that long, but my whole plan was like in November or something, the days be shorter and getting dark around 5:00, 5:30, and have a dedication of that statue and that memorial at that time, like 4:30 or 5 o'clock in the afternoon, where when we light it up, it would be very bright here on the, right in front of the courthouse. So I look forward to the day we do that, whether it be short days or long days now, because I like all of y'all, I get impatient about waiting on good things happening, so... But the wreath was different, I'd never seen a wreath made like that, but it had the nine different individuals' pictures on it that are on that memorial, so... But that's, basically, that's all I had. So with that, we'll, we'll break for lunch, and then we'll come back at 1:30 for public hearing.[1761.11][1761.11][music]